Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council. The notice here by given city council of city of Alpine, Texas for hold special meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, August 31st, 2021 in City Council chambers at 8:03 West Island Avenue and the Zoom conference in the city of Alpine, Texas. We log in details when we found it WWW.CityOfAlpine.com. The notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Media Section 551.043 Texas German Code. Members of our audience will provide an opportunity to visit council on any agenda item after the determination of a form approved of most of the meeting. Zoom in items after to on agenda items after the determination of a form approved of most of the meetings zooming guidelines procedures taken down in the city website. Members will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium, state your name and address of the in-person attendance. When addressing the council, please introduce yourself by first and last name, state that cloud the ward that you reside in or have been standing. For public comments made by virtual attendants, please email your name. And your name and award that you reside in or have been standing for public comments made by virtual attendants, please email your name to the media moderator at G dot held it on at C I dot Alpine dot T X dot U S. If you do not labor on property in the city, please state that in your email. If you have a petition or any other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand at city dot secretary at C I dot Alpine dot D X dot U S. State law journey prohibited to counsel for discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda but appropriate to counsel. And schedule a topic for future discussion or refer the matter to say, so personal attacks of council members or states that will be allowed. The airport's in council members that call a point of order to stop personal attacks or immediate disruptions if an individual is supposed to be attacked. Like that official or staff member and they will be barred. Do we have a court, sir?
Uh, yes, Mayor Counselor Judy Stokes is absent with excuse absence and the rest of the council members present here. Okay, the notice was posted on August 27th, 2021.
Yes, sir. With the reasons
United States of America, and to the very right for which it stands, one mission under our endless rule, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we have any public comments?
I have received no request for public comment.
Sorry, I'm getting to this. Can I just come up?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just, uh, if you could, please state your name and where you're from.
I'm sure that will stay up.
Okay, no problem.
To this, this whole process of if I'm out of line, just let me know.
Okay.
My name is Russell Gold. Or let's stay on it.
Okay, you relate to the Stolman? You're not? Okay, I'm in Ward Block.
Who's probably that should be mayor.
Yes, I am the mayor. I'm in Ward 1.
So the mayor doesn't have
I have the whole city.
So I'm under your watch.
Okay.
So they can go like a let's being all the possible questions. And the reason why I'm not here is actually thank you. Very much. Which then we have in part.
Uh, well, I didn't speak. But that's not a okay, so I don't understand.
I apologize.
I'll give you something. I'll give you something.
It's actually I was I was looking at your procedures to see how and I meant to the minutes for them, but obviously to me, this is how I I saw what happened from that. Reaction. Okay, pointed of Mr. Home containing what's name or whatever. I want you to know that you don't stand alone. I stand you know, sure that many other all its sound we can just thank you for that time.
Okay.
Really quickly, can you say your name again?
Priscilla P R I S as in sound, C as in count, I L L A O G O L D as in dog, E as in F as in nets, Priscilla.
Thank you so. Okay, there you go. Yeah, that was it. Okay. Uh, we don't have any presentations today and there aren't any reports and public hearings. We have none consent agenda. Which is been saying we have none on that information or discussion items we had none. And we had nothing on those. Action.
Exactly.
Yeah, we do have action items to be confident by a restatement of that's clue where that's or funds are coming from. Give that for the action items may be limited in temporary meeting after being called upon the mayor or by the appropriate citizens required to say the name and the board who puts your side. Sorry, we'll give it to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city individuals not living in or own business or property. Then it's about probably loud to speak if there's something available. Okay, item number one. See, man.
Discuss and consider and approve resolution 2021 dash oh eight dash three one. A resolution approving the updated credit card policy.
Okay, now it's just the motion.
I mean, that we discussed, consider and approve resolution 2021 dash zero eight dash thirty one. A resolution approving the updated credit card policy.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, okay, the second, so we'll open up the discussion. Any discussion?
I wanted to, I have a quarter minute. Um, this, the reason why these two are on here is because the bigger one, the grant one, is necessary to support the federal and state grant funding. But it includes the credit card policy as part of the description of the grant policy. The grant policy is, as you can tell, rather large. The, the credit card policy was outdated. It referenced a credit card company we no longer utilize. We don't get our credit cards through West Texas National Bank anymore. We joined the state program in with City Bank. Um, it also provides a defined level of the employees. So as one of the things that we've been talking about and some of the employees here will probably get mad at me is the constant change. We want to try and make the procurement process a little bit better, a little bit clearer. This gives employees, especially those who travel, those who need to run and make minor purchases, a, a better position to have a, a city credit card. In order to do that, we had to kind of put a parameter around it. The different levels of employee, your advisors or your supervisors, your director, your department heads, your, you know, your hourly employees to give them an actual kind of, okay, this is what I'm going to have available a month. It's not a free draw. It's not, I can use it to bypass any other items, which is also explained in here. But it also clarifies our purchase orders. Currently, we request a purchase order for all credit card purchases. It is an inconvenience. Um, it's always been kind of an inconvenience because even as a director, prior city managers, when you go and you're traveling and you make a purchase, it's okay, we even get a P O. So it's kind of preventing that, allowing a little bit of wiggle room so that they don't have to get a purchase order every time. But there is an outline who has to kind of certify and sign off with the account number of the expense so that there's a double set of eyes on the actual procurement. It also creates a custodian. Um, every department will have to issue credit cards to individuals that they would like to have them available. But they'll have to have a designated custodian. So hourly employees won't be able to carry this credit card with them at all times. Um, it will be stored and they secure the location on that department's, whether that yard, the gas apartment, water department. Um, and then they have to report monthly. Um, there is an outline of when receipts are due. Um, all the information they have to actually sign out for it, sign it back in. It is a little more tedious. But if Kirk wants to go travel, you know, he checks out his card, he goes, he does what he needs to do to travel, he pays his gas if he has to, he pays his meals, his hotel room. There's no, I have to have a P O for each one of these. I have to ask someone else's credit card. He is only responsible. So it's to help some of those employees who do that kind of a day-to-day activity to the travel and purchasing. Um, it also updated the unallowable and included a section for what would be the department could be considered inappropriate. So the guys are out in the field and one of them decides to go buy everyone lunch, doesn't get authorization, it's considered inappropriate. Or they go and they buy items that aren't necessarily related to the job they're doing. Um, everyone wants a trip, flashlight, everyone wants a trip, something. Um, the director or the head of the department would have the ability to say, this is an inappropriate purchase. It wasn't authorized and they would be responsible for that cost. Um, I mentioned that it updated the purchase order requirements. So a, any purchase under the 250 doesn't require a purchase order anymore. Um, under the new policy, anything over that does have to be authorized with the purchase order. Everyone has those credit limits. Um, we did not change the credit limit for the city as an entirety. So it's still set at 50,000 for the city as a whole and then each department and position is going down. Um, other big thing it did was it removed all of the elected official positions. Um, elected officials at 1.4 authorized to have credit cards. We, I did suggest removing it. Um, when Eric came back, credit cards were basically canceled at that point anyway. Um, our charter does specifically say that elected officials would be free push for actual expenses. That doesn't mean that the city secretary, the city manager can go and make your hotel reservations, pay for your registration and items like that. It's more the itemized, your meals, um, your fuel expenses actually related to your job that it's based off of our charter that we actually reimburse you for those expenses. Um, it makes it a little bit clearer as well, uh, trying to balance the different ordinances, charters and then policies. So those items so the big section that you see are in yellow is everything that was basically changed. Um, so those are the big differences. And then we did include the old policy as well so that you could see where it was coming. But I kind of wanted to give you the bullet points. I probably should take it up.
Question that about council when they travel and sometimes you fly for other expensive and careful hotels. And my question was, why can't the city pay for those in advance if the, if the council member that's traveling does not go to those conventions or, or T M L meetings, conferences? They would have to pay back to the city that expense unless they were canceled in advance, except for flights. That's the only thing that that I saw that you couldn't cancel, but the hotel rooms you can.
So the practice when I first started was that the city secretary, um, I don't remember the city manager doing it, but the city secretary would basically be all the reservations. Um, hotel, flight, your registration for the actual conference, and then we would kind of provide the paperwork with the, here's your kind of packet, here's the agenda, here's your travel information, your hotel. Um, and then it was where either one of you would come and say, hey, I'm not going to be able to make it. And we've had that happen a couple of times already. We just go in, we cancel everything on your behalf and, and then there's no, hey, where's your receipt? Hey, where are you at? What's been is, hey, come on, Friday, dear. Um, kind of takes the pressure off of you and then we ensure that everything is properly covered and careful.
Okay.
It would just be the meals that, um, if the conference didn't provide the meals, that you would just submit the receipt in the meeting first.
That's a good question. Thank you.
I thought that was a good way to go back. I discussed it with Jill as well.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all holds in favor, raise your hand. Those, that sign, what carries? Okay, item two, city manager. Item city manager.
Um, so the grant policies and procedures, this has been a in process for about three years now. In 2018, it was brought to the city's attention, um, that we weren't really compliant on the federal side for grants, policies and procedures. That the federal government in its two CFR part 200, it's the Uniform Administrative Requirements, costs, principles and audit requirements for federal awards. So the city has definitely taken on more and more grants at all levels, whether it be local, state or federal. Um, every year we've kind of slid under the radar with not having this policy in place. Um, I actually reached out to multiple cities in the COG. The COG came back and provided me a sample of their policy. And I chose to use that in order to meet kind of the, the checklist of everything that has to be included. This is not a perfect policy. Um, there's some items that will need to be approved down the road or updated. Um, in November of 2020, the federal government came back and redid a portion of the requirements to include what they call micro purchasing. Um, we are very fortunate. We don't fall under micro purchasing. Our thresholds are not between 130,000 and 200,000. We're way below that. So we're very lucky that we don't have to incorporate that whole concept here as well. We are required to kind of outline if we receive federal funding, if we receive state funding, how do we ensure that, you know, the money is being utilized correctly? This covers basically all of our internal policies. Our internal policies have always been in practice. Um, our employee handbook kind of covers some of our payroll stuff. We have a a very minimal procurement policy. We have a financial policy, budget policy, investment policy, credit card policy. We kind of have a little bit of all of them. This takes everything and puts it into one document. Um, the policy itself obviously isn't this big. Um, the attachments are what make it larger. So we are required to outline basically how our accounting works. What is our accounting software for five? Who do we use? What is our chart, uh, our ledger chart of accounts? Um, it addresses investment policy. It addresses the credit card policy. It addresses our organizational chart to kind of show that chain of command. Um, it addresses our payroll practices. Um, it also addresses our indirect costs. So when we apply for a grant, um, sometimes we are allowed to apply for the indirect cost. These would be the expenses that would cover your payroll for like Marcy, your grant writer. Items that not necessarily grant related, but we could, you know, claim as an indirect cost. So it addresses that. It, it, it's a, it's a very small blurb in addressing the fact that we'll look into and consider indirect costs and we'll follow a modified approach. And so we try to address everything on the checklist. It is a guarantee that when we get audited, something will have been missed or something will have been updated. Um, the federal government, state government, they all issue changes every so often. Um, it also has a internal procedure, which is our very last attachment, kind of our internal procedures and require requirements for our grants with our department. It's kind of like, hey, we're going to go get you the money, but you're not off the hook. You know, there's reports, there's paperwork that has to be filed. It's going to maintain it. It's checking up on it. So it kind of puts that guidance in there as well. The, the big function of this policy is also to understand that council has to be aware of all of the grants that we apply for. If it's a thousand dollars or if it's five million, the council needs to be aware. So it puts that process in place that says, okay, I've already even warned Marcy, October 1st, we're going to go out for all these grants, the first meeting, we need to go to council and say, these are all the grants that we're going to try and go for. With the understanding that some of these may be matching, some of these may have be grants that are already established, but that we renew. Our law enforcement has several of those. They renew them every year. We all obviously jump on board with those renewals, but this is the clear definition of we are going to do this and this is how we're going to do it. So it has been a work in progress for quite some time. It has been presented before councils before. We all get busy. They all get rushed. It's kind of swept under the carpet. It's not an audit finding. Because we've taken on such large grants, um, the airport was over 3 million. Uh, we have federal funds coming in from the American Rescue Plan. I want to ensure that we get this in place, even if we know we have to make changes. At least we're showing that effort that, hey, we're getting the money. We want to make sure we save money for the better.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Well, I think discussed with some thousand group Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those favor, raise your hand. Okay. You know, it was very much I would love to see council comments and answers and
Before you decide to call into executive, um, you're also a hazard person.
Okay. Well, if we can do that, then, then let's go ahead and take item one from Mexico session and let's make that item. Okay.
I don't know if you want to have a motion.
Okay. So I'll be the motion for that, please. You think that said the item one, executive session into item, make that item. Yeah, we're going to take a lot of discussion and action. Of the deliberation. Okay, is there a second? I'm sorry. There's a second. Okay, those wait a second. All those there. Okay. So I'll be accepted to session. It's either so seeing
To the great of the U C N appointment of the chief of police, uh, Daryl Luvia is being recommended to be appointed as sole active police supervisor.
Motion. Okay, both of the point Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, also the name, second discussion.
Yes. Oh, although this is not against Daryl, it's, it's not against anybody. I would just like to have it, just like I added with the city secretary, local city managing, local city attorney. I feel that we should put it out there for advertisement to see if there's anybody that is interested. There is plenty of officer Stephen within the Alpine Police Department that have been there for quite a long time and may be interested in it. And we may be overlooking their desire to be considered for something like this. Uh, like I say, it has nothing to do with, with Daryl's capability and going to do anything to do this job. I just think we should have offered, given other people a chance to put in.
Good. Any more discussion?
Well, I think that Daryl has been in this position for a very long time as an officer here in Alpine. I think that we should recommend him for this position. I think he's in a very good job across city and I think he's ready. I think he's ready to take on his position.
Okay.
Could we hear from Daryl on sure why he would like to be part of this, if what you can bring to this police department, please. But before Daryl speaks, it's okay if I, it is my recommendation. I'd like to take my thought process on it.
Um, so Daryl's been with this firm for over 27 years. As an employee, when you get hired with the city of Alpine, you are encouraged from day one. Learn more, do more, get the training, get the certification. You will move up, you will advance. And that's great, but as an employee and year after year and year after year goes by and you keep moving up and your opportunities presented and you're overlooked. As an employee that tells me that, okay, obviously I've done something wrong or I'm not good enough at my job. Yes, we can advertise. Yes, there's other people who may be interested. But in any position within the city, the city has encouraged employees to move forward. So when these bigger positions come open, I personally, I am going to recommend the chain of command, the next person who is more than qualified to do the job. Daryl has served as the interim chief of police before. He's currently served in Chief Martin's absence at C D A R O Medical. He's been the go-to person. He meets all the minimum requirements plus some. I think that as we move these positions and we create the chain of command and we encourage employees to get certifications, to get the training that they understand. When the positions are open, they're not going to be overlooked. They're going to be considered. It's going to be something that, hey, you know what? They've done here, they've been here 27 years. Let them have the opportunity. Uh, that, that's the whole reason why I joined the city was I knew that I would be given an opportunity whereas another position, like I knew I wasn't going to have that opportunity without being like I don't want to start setting first and it's back with our employees because we do struggle to hire people because they're, everyone gossip, everyone talks. And it's like, yeah, if I get the job, who knows when I'll move up? Who knows when I'll get to go to the next position? So, so we're trying to build that ladder. We're trying to build that, you know, your service worker, one, you're a two, you're a three, you're a foreman, you're a manager. Ultimately, we lose a director. Hey, here's my opportunity. Yes, there are many people who, who may be able to build a position, but it's the same process. They should all work up to that position. So that is why I'm recommending Daryl. He is proven to the city, not only as a police officer, but to the community. He, he helps the community whenever. And right now I think we're all focused on bringing it even back. Not only within our departments, but
I totally agree with everything that Megan is saying. The only issue that I had in it, the issue is that these positions and it's, and once again, I'm going to reiterate, girl, this is not personal. Uh, I have respect for you. I've worked under you and, and I have the utmost respect for you. My only thing was that these positions open up very, very the openings don't come very often and there's a lot of people that aren't able to come up. Well, Chief Scannell was here for years and years and years. Uh, so Daryl was stuck in a position, but he couldn't come up. Uh, I don't know, I wasn't on council and I don't know why he wasn't given the position the last time because I agree, he's been in and on that. I just wanted it to be, I just want the others that are below to know too, that they're going to be considered. And even if they choose to say no, I, it's not going to take them. Some of these can go through a whole career before they get a chance to do it. And that was my goal.
So, uh, uh, so, uh, I started for the city of Alpine back in 1994. Um, I came out of the military in 1993. I worked for Bush County Sheriff's Office for a year. Yeah, worked, worked in jail, worked in Sheriff's Office. Uh, loved my time with Sherwood Daniel. The, during this time, I was also still in the military. I was in the Naval Reserve and came back to Alpine and, uh, in, like sample, yeah, in the chief penitentiary at the time. Decided to put me on as a part-time dispatcher. And so, uh, building my, my knowledge with the, with the structure of the police department. Uh, went to the academy in 1995 and became a police officer. I was a reserve for an entire year. I stayed in the reserve. Back then we had plenty of police officers and so they would pull from our reserve force and then they would start full-time. Uh, at one point I was working three jobs, four jobs. I was working four jobs as, for the city of Alpine. I was a part-time dispatcher, part-time out patrol officer, part-time police officer and a part-time lifeguard. And so, uh, I was here that long in, uh, 1996, I started working full-time and, uh, then, uh, from there it was, uh, Chris Troy was our, was our interim chief of police. And then Chief Scannell was hired as the full-time chief. And the entire time, just building my way up as a full-time police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, and then in 2016, uh, I was appointed as the captain of the police department. And, uh, my wife, Melance, she would call the, the house, the, the And my wife, Melange, she would call the house the substation. Y'all know what a substation is, on big cities, there's always broken down because we would have people come to our house. And I had a domestic. I responded to domestic in my underwear. They came to my front door at two o'clock in the morning and she wanted my help. So and that happens all the time, it happens every, at least once a week. Somebody comes over to the house and they need our help. And so I have always had an open door. And I don't know what happened with twenty nineteen, to be honest with you, I don't know what happened. Our city manager at the time, Eric Zimmer, had the applications vetted through one of his friends, who is now a good friend of mine, who I actually just texted. Alan Banks, Ramon Law Police Department, vetted you the applications and. He apologized to me because he told me he doesn't know what happened. Because he had to meet as the chief of police of Alpine. I've had, I have more training hours than the chief Martin. I have education and I also have my military background. And I also have more years of service. I dedicated myself to the city. And with that, I appreciate Chief Martin because I did learn things from him. This is my home. I'm born here, I'll die here. We'll be honest with you, when I didn't receive a position back in twenty nineteen, I, I, I felt like I invalidated myself and. I didn't go job searching. It was weird because it basically came to me. I was a finalist for another city as chief of police and they wanted somebody more local and I totally understand that. And then I was also hired by Texas Municipal Police Association. And so I've been working with them for a year and they have taught me how to. Work as far as, as far as big cities, as far as contract bargaining. And delivering for officers. And so I've learned a lot of that information to us. I've built my knowledge for the last two years to make myself better. I love the city, I can't tell you not. These are, since, since we've had the conversation of being put on as, as. When I found out when Chief Martin decided to retire. I have already taken steps in, I've met with the new engineer here in Alpine or unit seven. And worked and we're working on trying to find a resolve for the westbound trains to keep the history open. I've met with the local agencies to try to get us to work together. It is important that we unify our city the way it used to be. When we can trust on each other. You know, in twenty sixteen, when we had the school shooting, the bomb threats, all that one day, we all worked together. Every single alphabet from the federal government and all the state agencies, all the locals. Sheriff's Office, PD, the university police department, we all worked together and we need to bring that back. In, I believe that I, I, I always had that feeling that. That I can, even though we may have disagreements. I remember Chief Scannell and Ronnie Dodson, they would have a disagreement. They begged, but they resolved the issues. Just by getting along and that's what we have to do. And I want to put my neck out. Kirk and Bill are excellent. And they don't, this community doesn't not know how much they do for. I want to set them up. I don't know how long it's gonna be doing this, it's not gonna be. It's not gonna be long, right? But I am dedicating myself to this community. Those guys, they, if, when it happens, they're gonna be ready. And I'm gonna make sure. We're looking at. I was scheduled to go to an FBI academy. And unfortunately, COVID got in the way. But. I'd like to see that. There's also the law enforcement management institute in Texas. That's something that normally chiefs go through, but there's also other courses in, that's one of the things that. Kirk's already working on. And so we're gonna have all this process, we're gonna have a good environment and a professional environment where we can trust each other. Being a part of American Legion. Here's one of the things about me too, I'm a ward, I'm gonna be a ward and chief. You can see me out there working, traveling, you can see me out there. Giving it away on certain ones. But I can't, I can't stand back. Recently. The Lambeau Police Department had a shooting and I responded as a member, as a bill representative for Texas Police Association. Been watching them work together. I miss that, it's over. And so. Being a part of communities, it matters and that's what Bill is good.
Is this chief of police, it's, if you wouldn't just you.
Yes, ma'am.
Prior to life, what's gonna fly? Do you have your life support on this because this is going to be just as hard on her as it's going to be on you? It's not harder because there's, with, with, with the type that you said you put out, it's going to probably increase. Being a working chief, you're gonna be almost as pleased as you're gonna be. Do you have your family support?
Yes, I do. So in two thousand two, I don't know if y'all remember that, Bill Luvia's candidate Alpine as our city manager. We lost seven officers to Haze County Sheriff's Office. I made more that year than I have ever made in my career in the city of Alpine. We were working sixteen-hour days. Working a lot and so my wife's been used to it, leaving in the middle of the night. Sometimes she doesn't really leave until I kiss her, kiss her butt. So. She's been, she's been dedicated to it for the last, or more than twenty-five years, more than twenty-five years, so. No, no, not at all. Kirk has twenty years with the police department, Bill has twenty-five, so. I'll know when I'm ready, but it's not gonna be two years or something like that, so.
So you're not gonna give us twenty-five years?
Twenty-five more? No, I will not, I will not, I'm sorry. I'm fifty years old and I'm. Just as long as I can put my, my smile at the end, I'm all right.
But I, I think that this is a kind of end before somebody has started from the bottom and moved to the top. I think it's time, I think it's time for you to say.
And we do need to change in this environment and right now, this community and our city governance gets stronger and better. And we just need to try to do, to continue this legacy of developing the city in a good public relationship with the public. And that's what, that's what needs to be done and have confidence in you, I've known you for eleven years, you know. And, you know, watched you when you handled situations or something like that and the compliments on that. And you did kind of relax on, you started at bottom, at the cellar, below the cellar maybe, right? But, and that's good and I'm glad that Negan had recommended you and there's opportunities for Kirk, that we've been and others to start preparing. That, you know, it's not gonna be just a dead in general, sooner or later, they could be the chief. Yes, okay, so any more discussion? I'm gonna call for a question. Okay, all those in favor of Daryl appointment, raise your hand. All those at sign. Congratulations, sir.
Chief Martin is currently on medical leave for the last six months. So he's actually been acting in the role in Chief Martin's absence. So I think he would start third stage. They're really gonna transition.
If she could discuss his contract.
There's no, there's no contract.
You've discussed his pay, you know, he's happy.
It's on the calendar for tomorrow. Had to make sure he was okay.
Okay, city council, we'll start with you. Okay. Okay. Congratulations again.
See everyone next week.